And I've got someone that we've contacted to fill my bail. I can be with them now. It depends on how vigorously out of order this is. Of course, from the looks of things, you've got a standing room only crowd. This could be a test of your leadership and where your law enforcement career is at.
The sky's the limit.
You call it a career goal?
I don't know what a real call in an MSLB feel like. That poor soul over there had his first memorable appearance. He had signed up for subdivision.
In Derwin Village, I believe. And I have to admit, you were right.
Well, you remember my famous saying? I love it when I'm wrong. I've never been happy about that.
If you're not.
Well, the legend is just the fact that you can delegate.
Where you're not being looked at.
But I don't think you're insufficient in defending. If I called upon that for counsel, it would be a conflict of ethics.
Brian, how you doing, sir?
Do you have any college application?
I heard you're on vacation.
I am.
You're on vacation?
Got back last night, I'm here.
Look at this, look at it.
I'd like to call the Wilmington City Council Regular Meeting, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, to order. May we have our call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Learman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Evelyn.
Here.
And Matt Kirkby.
Here.
Seeing everyone here, may we stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Under the President's agenda tonight, you have the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Approved by, or excuse me, motion made by McKay, second by Albright, to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved as presented. You also have before you the meeting minutes of the March third meeting. What is your pleasure?
Moving the acceptance is presented.
Second.
Moved by Kirkby, second by Osborne, to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes are accepted. Mayor, stand for it.
First thing I want to talk about is our new water meters, relatively new, that have the radio tomator readout. So if there's a water line break at somebody's home, and suddenly their water usage spikes, then there's a warning that goes across to our computer system. We call the property owner or the homeowner and say, hey, we think there's a problem with your house, your water usage is excessive. And I'm glad to report that system is working very well. We've had, I don't know how many. The way we find out about them is if the water goes out in the yard, like you're outside of those bit breaks, the water goes out in the yard, you still pay for water, but we'll give you a sure. And in the past, if folks didn't know about that break, these would run into hundreds of dollars. But now, when we know within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, they're dropped significantly. I think the last couple were a hundred bucks or so. But anyway, I'm very glad that a system that we installed, and when I say we, I'm talking about council, approved those appropriations to do that. When a system like that works, it makes you feel good.
Thank you. We've got something right this time. Fish fry at the Knights of Columbus, Friday, March eighteenth, twenty-fifth at four. Four thirty to seven, at St. Plumb Church, dine and carry out, thirteen dollars. Always have a great fish fry there. Drowsy Lads at Murphy Theater, Friday, the eighteenth, that's tomorrow, at seven-thirty. Call and reserve your tickets. I don't know if the tickets are still available or not, I hope so. Country Legends Trips Tour at Murphy Theater, Saturday on the nineteenth. Same thing, call to get your tickets. And London Luncheons are still going on at the Methodist Church, that's Wednesdays. Going to be on the twenty-third and the thirtieth, that goes from eleven to one. There was blazed chicken last Friday, I don't know what's on. Forgot what's on the menu next, but it's always good, whatever it is. Eight dollars. Which is served and drank, too. Hazardous Waste Collection Day, Saturday nineteenth, from nine to twelve at the Wilmington wastewater facility on Nelson Avenue. And I got a note here of what kind of things the people can bring, except I left it somewhere. But it's hazardous waste, it's like paint that are, old paint, old pesticides. You know, that jar, maybe some kind of cleaning compound, that you definitely don't want to pour down your drains, what you do with it, you bring it to the recycling center and they will dispose of them, or they will collect them. And again, that's April the ninth, from nine to twelve, I'll be announcing that again and I'll have that list with me next time. That's a repeat on the hazardous waste collection. Oh, April twenty-third, nine to eleven is going to be Clean Up Wilmington. This is going to be the 2020 kickoff for the voluntary event, hosted by the City Wilmington Code Enforcement Office. It's going to be spring litter removal and cleanup, need volunteers, of course, and contact code enforcement to sign up. Or else, and then on the, that's at eleven, then eleven to four, same day, in downtown Wilmington, AZAC, and Earth Day Experience. I don't know what that means, actually.
I think they did the presentation about it.
Yep. Doesn't say, it doesn't say where, though.
I think it's all the way downtown.
Okay. I should probably read these after Adam gives them to me. Twenty-third, nine to twelve, at Clinton County Engineers Office, the annual tire recycling event, so you've got old tires laying around. Bring them out, I think they charge a nominal fee, a dollar or something, it's not much. What?
That is a real bargain.
Yeah, it is, you know.
Yep. We charge three fifty or three seventy-five now, people want to bring them out to us, TD.
Right. So it's sort of a dollar, but it's passenger cars. Oh, I found it. Antifreeze, old fuel, used oil, oil-based paint, stains, pink them. Those are just some of the items that you detect. And I think that might be all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your bands?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You obviously have something.
Yeah, I'll be clear, I have no legislation, I'll be quick. That's open to city residents only, just, I don't know if you said that or not, the has-waste drop-off.
Yeah, the county, oh yes, on the chemicals.
It's for city residents.
Only for city residents. And the tire, I think that's for the county.
That's for the whole county, correct, yeah. But they're, I think they're going to check IDs for the has-drop-off, hazardous waste drop-off, so I just want to make sure that was clear. Here's like, this is kind of the thing I'm doing now, the heads-up for the council meetings. Because I feel like that's the best way to do this. We have, this is like the title of one of the projects that's coming in right now, Andrew, you know what I'm talking about, we can, we felt this coming. So the projects are starting to ramp up now. Romback Avenue will resume next week, March twenty-first. What to expect? On March twenty-first, removing the concrete walk in front of Kroger, replaced with asphalt bike path. What you should expect is the eastbound lane closed from Kroger to Progress Way. That's worst-case scenario. I'm being told it'll probably be intermittent, they might, they probably won't close the whole eastbound lane from Kroger to Progress Way, but those closures will be happening starting next week. The following week, they're going to be replacing the water main fire hydrants, hydrants, they're going to be relocating them on the south side for the bike pass, that bike path, and possible pavement repairs. Again, those eastbound lane closures from Kroger to Progress Way, expect that starting next week on Romback Avenue. April, that's when we would expect possible milling field, that's where they take off the top layer of asphalt and make the pavement repair, repairs, God, struggling, single lane closure is needed. And middle of April, that's when we really expect them to do that. So March and April will be very busy on Romback Avenue. Also downtown, intersection project beginning March twenty-eighth. This is a safety improvement project, they will start down here on the Sugar Tree intersection. This is with the new signals that we've talked about over and over again, that are going to communicate with each other. So you have the Sugar Tree section with the bump outs all the way up to Locust and Main. And so that would, that would be expected March twenty-eighth. To give you an example, and I know this is hard to read right now, but on South Street and Main, you can see where they're going to construct these bump outs here for pedestrian safety. So this is all going to be happening this month. Curbs bump outs and drainage, the poles and traffic signals, we've got lead times on the poles, that's what we're going to be waiting on. I don't know how soon those will come in, but as soon as those come in, then you will have the pavement markings, et cetera. We would expect few interruptions as far as vehicle traffic when we do this project. There's going to be work on the shoulder and parking lanes, no major closures, but they will, there will be some flagging, there may be some lane closures. You should expect the foot traffic closures of the crosswalks, pedestrians diverted across the street, and there will obviously be signage to help the pedestrians know what is the best path to use for that project. It's all happening at once, it's crazy.
Brian, that'll be this crosswalk right here also.
There's three, yeah. They're all, one, two, three, yeah.
I'm going about the center.
One, two, yeah.
The one in the center of the street here, thank you.
Yep, Sugar Tree, all the way.
In the mid-block.
In the mid-block as well. Pedestrian crosswalk as well.
Brian, we've talked about, I know we were talking specifically about Sugar Tree, but will the intersection we push forward to clear, I know that was one of the concerns, by having the bump out, where we're going to push the intersection on Sugar Tree going west out to get around that visibility of that building? That was something we had talked about.
No.
It's not, it's not changing the intersection at all?
No.
Okay.
Because they're retaining the light?
Yes.
So if it was a stop sign, then you'd have to do that because you would have a.
You mean the visibility, okay.
We're going to put it around about.
You were asking fatalities there?
That was actually the discussion about where that would go around about, so that's true.
Brian, on the traffic lights that are going to talk to each other.
Yeah.
Is that, I've had this question, and I want to make sure everybody understands, that is just going to be in this line, it's not going to replace the entire intersection, it is in one line of traffic.
These three intersections, which I'm messed up, these three intersections, yes.
Right, these three intersections.
Yes.
All the lights or just the ones on this street?
All three of these signal intersections will communicate with one out there.
Okay. I think, I'm asking clarity too.
Does that make sense?
Sorry, at Sugar Tree, all four ways will have new traffic signals or just the ones on South Street?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Okay, so all four of those are going to be brand new?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so literally at the same time, North Mulberry is going to be underway, March twenty-eighth is when they're expecting to start that project. That's Locust Streets, Azenia, New York to A Street. We're replacing the four-inch old water main here, that was why we wanted to do this, with a new six-inch main. All of the lead service lines on this will be replaced, repairing damaged sidewalk areas, and then we will be paving it as well, installing ADA compliant ramps at the intersections. There will be lane closures, we are bringing it in too, right? There will be, bringing in, you're probably going to hear citizens calling and stuff about this. In fact, as part of the project, we carried, we videotaped the centers, this whole stretch. We had a lot of citizens calling about, hey, there's a guy out here videotaping our, so I don't know if you guys had any of those calls or not, but we videotape, we videotape these before we do projects and stuff, and then before we do construction. So that's, that's going to be underway here very soon, in the next couple of weeks as well. I brought this up last time, because I got a couple of calls. Center Point, which is formerly known as Vectren, they're going to be doing a project in the northeast quadrant, which is actually where our next paving project is going to be. I just want to assure you that we're not going to lay any asphalt down until they're out of the way. So I know you can't see this, but where there's yellow lines and stuff, this is where they're going to be putting in new gas lines, we've had meetings with them, here's some of the streets and stuff. Some of these streets are part of the new paving project. I haven't presented that to you yet because I'm whining off until they finish and get out of the way first. So I just wanted to remind you that this is happening and it's actually already started. It started March seventh. Last time I heard, they were on Burt's Hill and High, I believe, is that right?
They've been out parking High Street.
Yep, so that's where they were by, so they're out there working now, hopefully they'll get out of the way. And under advance, you can keep me updated on where they are and stuff, so.
How far up Lincoln Street are they going to go, Brian?
What's that?
How far up Lincoln Street?
There's only one place on Lincoln Street.
Yeah, Lincoln is just.
Just one tiny location.
Go ahead.
Fifty-three.
There's two crossings, there's two crossings right here on Lincoln Street, but the north is south on Lincoln, there's not much, there's just two crossings right here. Thank you. Yep. And I can share this with you if you want more detail. Another thing that's getting, that's starting right now, the Timberland subdivision, phase six. This is at the end of Timberland Drive. This is just one portion of the new residential development that we've talked about. Construction started actually yesterday, blocks A and B, there's thirty-seven single-family homes here. JA Development out of Westchester, we'll be doing the work, it's from seven AM to seven PM. So the residents here should expect trucks, noise, construction. And so here's the math, and if anybody wants to see this, that's fine, but it's just this section that they expect to be completed by July first with the infrastructure for that. And when you, when we say infrastructure, Andrew, we're talking about the water sewer, we're talking about the road.
Water sewers, storm, road, detention, all of that pretty stuff.
So just so you know, this is well-attended here, anyway, it's from Arbor Ridge, Timberland, so this is the area where they'll be working this month. Also tonight, you'll see, we had a finance meeting tonight, you'll see that there's supplemental appropriations, and under advance, please jump in if you want, but it is substantial, it was something we've always, we've been talking about for several weeks now, as part of the heads-up program before. Airborne Road transferring five hundred ninety thousand dollars profit from the general fund. We talked about our missing tax fund of three hundred, three hundred thousand to fully fund this project. The Clarksville Connector Project, which is the trail, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant, but we have to fund the program first and then we get reimbursed. State Highway Fund, we still have, this is pretty much all we have left to fully fund this House Street project, which I was talking about earlier, fifteen thousand. That's going to come out of the State Highway Fund, you'll see that on the supplemental. And then finally, the general fund to Davis Drive Engineering, two hundred eighty-four thousand. That will allow us to design the project out entirely, phases two and three. And just a reminder, I've said this before, but we have not received an invoice. We did pole relocation last year and we sent, we communicated this in May of twenty-one, that when we move the poles on Romback, we should be receiving a bill for over four hundred thousand to relocate those poles on Romback Avenue. We have not received that invoice, but I want to keep reminding you that we did not fund that because we have not received the invoice, and that will be coming as well. This is new, right, Andrew?
Yes, it hasn't been, we haven't put out a press release or.
Do you want to talk about it?
So you can also get updates, like the, you know how I send out the press releases? You can also have a link to those press releases texted to you instead of through your email. All you do is have to text WilmingtonOne to nine one eight nine six and follow the directions, and that will put you on a distribution list. And then whenever we are getting ready to alert the public for something, we'll also send out a text to those people on the distribution list. It's part of the Text My Gov app, which we, you can get information on that on our website, how to text your gov and make reports, find information, that kind of stuff.
So a lot happening, and it's going to be happening soon. That's all I have, any questions?
Brian, if I was in my radio days, I'd come back and say this is old news, and we'll bring it up again. I've had a few business people along Romback Avenue say, we don't like this idea of no left-hand turns. Old news, here we go again.
Right.
They have short-term memory. Did we talk about this, didn't we have public forums talk about it?
We beat it to death, I mean, I think the compromise at the end of the day was, I know we were discussing the medians, which would have prohibited turn-in, turn-ins to the businesses, and what we agreed to was that there would be no left turn-outs at unsignaled, unsignalized lights. But this is something we've discussed over and over and over again. And I guess, let me show you some, if I can pull it up real quick, if it comes up, it probably won't come up.
I think people hear things, they don't listen.
Yeah, and I was going to show you, for example, how this will look when people can make the left turn-ins to businesses. You know, and there'll be striking involved and stuff, there's no medians. Left turn-ins will happen, but the left turn-ins will be outs we prohibited, that's something we've discussed since day one. And I'm getting a lot of questions about the pedestrian refuge island and stuff, and I've got, we've sent plans to the business centers to show them what that looks like, and I don't really know what else to say other than this is, this is what we agreed to, this is what we're doing.
I've also received calls and conversations about it, and there is a gentleman who, I forget his name, slips me right out, he's used to the bottom of Wendy's. Bought that business since this whole thing happened. So I, you know, I do have a little bit of empathy for the fact that it probably wasn't fully explained to you during the sale, but this is the project that's happening. But everybody else, it's, this, the story hasn't changed since the project began, so I feel for, for what they're, what they're saying, but this was the, I think sometimes when it, when the cry was no medians, no medians, you took that away as a victory and didn't hear the rest, which is there still won't be left turn-outs.
There were business people sitting right back there in that gallery and also downstairs and says, we'll go along with that, we'll go along with that, that's okay. Some of them were also the ones saying, we didn't agree, I didn't know anything about it.
Complaints about the pedestrian island, but that crosswalk was requested by the businesses, you know, that's, and I think it's a great thing. If I were, if I were a business right there, I'd want to be able to capture some of that traffic over the park.
For whatever reason, what I, I'm trying to show you it on the screen, but it's not coming, it's not here. But yeah, I wanted to show you it because, yeah, you have the left-hand turns, you have the pedestrian crossing here, and yeah, we're prohibiting left turn-outs.
Yeah, if you come from the state patrol barracks heading towards Kroger, you could still left turn anyways. You could still left turn.
Absolutely.
Correctly.
It's exiting the business, that's the key thing, exiting the business.
They've already paid. And crossing several lanes of traffic was the safety concern that we had. And the median was going to prohibit a lot of those left turn-ins, and that's what we negotiated, that's what we, that's what we worked through. We, we made a deal that we were going to go away with the median, you know?
We have a question for the audience.
Yeah.
Who mandated that pedestrian refuge?
What do you mean mandated?
Did it come down from the state that they had to be there?
The business owner said that he was having issues with kids leaving the park and crossing five lanes of traffic, running across five lanes of traffic, so there was a safety issue. We took that advice, went to our traffic engineers, the safety people, and said, hey, the business owner wants children to get from point A to point B so they can get ice cream safely. And the state requires what's called a refuge pedestrian island, which is what I would love to show you right now.
That's all right.
Is what is out, what is out there right now, because you can't cross five lanes safely.
I have questions about the city's liability for that. Since you're a learned jurist of some renown, I'll put it to you.
Formally, I'm not practicing well right now, but go ahead.
Your license is still wet.
Go ahead.
I have noticed with ever-increasing regularity, quite a few people heading eastbound, coming up the center lane, stopping at that concrete island, refuge, and attempting to turn into Wendy's. And in doing so, technically, and I believe there's someone here from the law enforcement community that might be able to bear this out, when you make a turn in either direction, you're making a left-hand turn, you make the left-hand turn, you turn. You don't make the left-hand turn just a little bit, then come back to the right a little bit into opposing traffic, and then finish your left-hand turn. Is that illegal, left turn?
Are you talking about the pedestrian?
The pedestrian.
Pedestrian, so.
With amazing regularity that's been going on. All sorts of vehicles to get into Wendy's from the eastbound.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to show you this, because it shows exactly.
I know what you're talking about, it's just, it's what the drivers, the motoring public are doing when they're eastbound and want to get into Wendy's. And I just want to clarify, the city will have a future liability or an unreasonable risk management if there's any accidents there resulting in injury or worse and property damage because of the placement of that.
No, I hear you, and that's why we're doing this, I mean.
But if they're making an illegal left-hand turn to get into Wendy's by turning left, starting their left turn, then doglegging into opposing westbound traffic and then finishing the turn into the driveway.
So the left turn into Wendy's is before you get to the pedestrian.
They're still doing it.
It's not, the, okay, the construction's not finished either.
Well, then that means that island's going to be moved further down, so it accomplishes the.
The signage and everything has not been completed, like in the RFPs, and so the left turn in, there is a, there's a section here where they will come in and stack and turn left, and the crossing is on the eastbound side of that, over here.
I understand all that.
But I just need to share this with you.
There's an issue, and it appears to be a safety issue, that's, that's my observation.
I got you, I got you, as far as.
I'm concerned about the city's liability, since there's nothing there other than a couple of barrels, and for whatever reason, certain parts of the motoring humanity have a tendency just to ignore things like that, and turn, start the turn, head westbound, finish the intermediate part of the turn, and then finish their left-hand turn to get into Wendy's.
Yeah, and I find people turning, still turning left out of businesses when there's a sign right in front of them that says, don't do it.
The city could be swimming in cash if there were some kind of cameras parked there, because based on what I've seen, and I've actually sat out there a few times, on a slow day, it's about twelve times each and every day, on a slow day. It's much more than that, but I don't sit out there, you know, when they open and when they close.
Yeah.
But it appears to be a hazard, and that's my concern. Whose liability is it until this is all clarified, signs put up, and it's further modified? Because it's just a matter of time.
I, I hear you, but also, signs, they, I mean, you've got to follow the traffic laws, you know what I mean? And people don't, if they don't follow the traffic laws, they don't follow the traffic laws.
Right now, there's no signs on the westbound side of that pedestrian refuse, refuge indicating that you're either not supposed to make a left turn or you're supposed to use caution making the turn.
Turning.
Turning, eastbound, coming up on the center lane, turning north or into Wendy's, jogging a bit westbound into the traffic, and then finishing the turn into the driveway, the east, the east side driveway of Wendy's.
Okay, I'll share that with the engineers.
It appears to be a significant issue and a good result, and I was under the impression, since it was an ODOT situation, they would pick up the change if there was a problem, but from what I've just heard here in the last few minutes, the city's unhooked, if there's an accident, somebody decides to sue over it because of where it is and the way it's marked and not marked.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, it would be nice if something could be expedited because, expedited, because depending on when that particular part of the project's addressed, I'm sure that the local law enforcement community and the, the boys and girls at Firehouse would not want to have to go out there and start picking up pieces after a rush hour wreck. Not mentioning what it would do to everybody going both ways, they'd just shut down that whole artery.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You've talked to us several times about hiring a special engineer, incidentally. That's quite a, quite a group of projects you've got there, and managing that's going to be quite a handful.
Yeah.
But it's a good thing, and I admire you for taking it on. You mentioned several times we're going to have a special inspector or an engineer to inspect these projects, where do we stand with that?
So like the ODOT projects, they have inspectors, okay? What I was talking about is we need an inspector for the city to contract with. What I was talking about is, we need an inspector for the city to contract with so that we can look at, like, the subdivision developments and stuff like that, and just have extra eyes. And so, that is something that I'm gonna be requesting additional funding for in the future.
Wouldn't that also include Mulberry Street, though, and the paving projects you want to do this year as well?
Yes.
But Mulberry Street's gonna start right away.
Yes.
Who's gonna inspect?
Give me money. Yes, yes.
Set a meeting?
Yes, can we discuss it? Yeah, 'cause I would love to talk about it, yeah. I brought this up multiple times, we need to inspect these projects thoroughly. So, I would be thrilled if you wanna have a committee meeting on that, so I can give you more detail on the inspection services, yes.
We're setting up a meeting up in, if that happens.
I'd love that, thank you.
The project on Airborne Road. I've had a lot of complaints about the fact that the traffic types out there, they're closing those lanes where they're not supposed to be closed. How are you gonna deal with that?
Actually, that was at the Port Authority's request at our pre-construction meeting. They asked if we would start earlier. And the reason we were gonna start later, because we thought that's what they want. For the pre-construction, they said, "Well, we'd really rather you start earlier so you could hurry up and get done." So, that was a fair request, that's what I did.
The plans, on page one, there's a note on the plans that says they can only have those two lanes. They have to have the two lanes open except during the hours. On page one, it says between the hours of nine and three.
Yeah.
And the traffic maintenance is said between the hours of nine and four.
Yeah.
But that was amended at the pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, he's complaining.
I'm sorry?
Who's complaining?
The ports are on.
Who's complaining?
I had six calls from...
Who's complaining?
I had six calls from...
Who was complaining?
My tenants at the airpark.
Okay.
That they're getting, they were late getting to work.
And we've timed it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Andrea told me that somebody called up, was extremely aggrieved to her, not you, somebody.
I was gonna say.
About the hours and shutting the traffic down. I thought, oh, we made a mistake here. So firstly, I went out at about 8:15, and I was coming off 1:34, and just as I got to the construction area, I hit the flagman, stopped me, and I started my stopwatch. And when I made to the flag guy on the other side, it was a minute and five seconds. I did it again yesterday, and this time, I think it was around 11:00. This time, I was further back in traffic, I don't know how many cars were in front of me, six, eight, I don't know. But this time, I started my watch when I stopped. And the time they let me through, and I hit the flagman on the other side, two minutes and five seconds had gone by. And my opinion is, if you're cutting that close to get to work, you probably should pull that for a second. The traffic backup just isn't that much, and I'm not disputing what your tenants are saying, I'm just saying, they're wrong.
First of all, I'm talking about, I'm carrying this to you folks because complaints that I got. Have you had any problems with kids at school? Have we been good? Well, actually, they'll probably start later than 3:30.
And they also quit at three, I thought, not four, they quit at three.
Most, yeah.
You said from nine to four, I think you misspoke, you really said nine to three. There isn't one of those.
The plans, the plans show nine to, it's contradictory, the plans.
Yeah.
Okay, and no, one, in the cover sheet, it's nine to three. In the traffic maintenance thing, it's nine to four. I may have that backwards, but it's...
Yeah, right, right. But they do know that traffic picks up significantly out there after three or five.
And I'm sure that they'll probably get used to it after a while.
Yeah.
But it was a request of Port Authority is why those hours were changed. And since they were a major contributor to the funding, we listened to what they had to say.
Any other questions about that?
No, that's it.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council Committee reports, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
City Services Committee, Mr. Evelyn.
No report, Mr. President.
Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our only item of legislation is we have three readings on ordinance 2213, which is making supplemental appropriations. The larger appropriations are discussed last meeting and this meeting and at the committee meeting. If there's any additional questions anyone has about any of the ten appropriations, I will Google it or answer, or I will try to answer, but most likely she would answer a thousand times better than I would. But are there any questions about any of these particular appropriations?
No, I'd like to say I appreciate the, this has been very transparent upfront in talking about these costs. So, Brian, very keen, thank you for not beating us over the head with them when it's time, but I appreciate the effort to get it out in front of it, let everybody know before you, what we're spending money on.
I would add that there's some, that this has been a wonderful process, and this is a lot of money, a lot of money, but it's money well spent, so, thank you.
Let's see, no questions. I move to give the first reading only on ordinance 2213 by a title only.
Second.
Motion for the first reading, Albright, second by Osborne. All in favor, six of them, I would say nine. I oppose. First read, please.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance 2213, second reading by a title only.
Second.
Motion for suspension of rules, second by Osborne. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
All have approved. May we have the second, third read, please?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to pass ordinance 2213 as a red.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ordinance 2213 passes.
And we have no additional items, Mr. President, so thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Albright. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perkey.
I don't really have anything, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'll try to be brief. Some of these things, we've drug out in the name of transparency and providing an open conversation about them all, but I'll skim over a few just to get us started, because we, we're dealing with our first piece of business tonight. It's ordinance 2208, which is, I'm sorry, amending, it's ordinance 228, which amends ordinance 1948 that gives a 2% pay increase to the employees. So, we've had discussion about this, we had, this is the third meeting, I think we've kinda gone over it. As we've indicated, I think that it was originally an attempt to have a longer-term schedule, but after communicating with the administration and human resources, I think that this is maybe just the first step in a larger part of the compensation package that may be researched or whatnot. So, it seemed kinda foolish to put in a, you know, a pay scale over many years and not knowing what the future may hold for that, so it's been amended to just include this one increase. Sure of that, are there any other questions or any discussion we can have about it? This is the second increase for employees this year, they had a 2% cost of living, and this is a mid-year adjustment that is taking effect once, you know, it was in 30 days from passage, so...
It reads the first pay after this passage.
First pay after the passage, okay. But no, there's no retro pay or anything like that, so...
So, the previous 2% was the cost of living, and this is a 2% increase?
Yeah. And, I mean, you know, we've kinda had this conversation a lot, too. It's indicative of every industry in the country right now, inflation's up, wages are up, everything's up, so... If there are no other questions or discussion about it before we call for last reading, I wanna make sure there's nothing further. Okay, then I move for the third reading, ordinance 2208, by title only.
Second. Motion by Perkey, second by McKay, third read, ordinance 2208. So, it's third read, let's go ahead and have a roll call on this.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
All approved. May we have third read, please?
In ordinance amending ordinance number 01948 to increase wages under the employee pay plan for calendar year 2022.
Has amended.
All right, move to pass ordinance 2208 as red.
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Ordinance 2208 passes.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item on my agenda. I just caught this now, but it looks like there is no item B, so we're skipping ahead to item C.
I was wondering, I thought the same thing about my glasses.
So, the second thing on the agenda tonight is ordinance 2209. This deals with creating the incentive by District TIF. This is in regards to the property that was discussed for CRA last year with, behind Temperance Land, that neighborhood over there in the southwest corner of the city. I feel like we've probably talked this a whole lot, too, but in the interest of being transparent, I wanna give anybody a chance to ask questions if any discussions necessary. Yes, sir.
Just a brief synopsis of what's going on back there to the best of your knowledge, ability, and wisdom.
Sure. The community currently has a CRA, which is a way to incentivize financing, and we, the council has discussed a lot in the last year about what to do with that. Our current CRA lots for a five-year payment on new property taxes. So, once there's a certificate of ownership or occupancy for the house, the homeowner could enjoy a five-year window of no property tax minus the lot, the value of the lot, they still have to pay property tax on it, but they would not pay property taxes for that time. That's our current legislation. In order to incentivize some development, there was a discussion of changing that, that ended up not happening. But we did, working with the Port Authority attorneys, we were able to find, we had discussed TIFs, which are tax, that was a tax increment financing, a TIF agreement, which we've done before in the city. But we didn't think you could overlay them over a residential project, they were more for commercial projects. And typically, what happens is the developer wants to bond that out, to take all the money out in front, and then, so they have, you know, money to build the streets or build the sewers, or... In this case, with it being a residential TIF, we were legally allowed to overlay it, but it's not, you can't throw all the money the same way, you can't bond out the money. So, the developer was okay setting up a structure where, and Brian, do you remember if there was, was there a dollar amount, was it $50,000? They have a threshold in that discussion about how often they could pull money?
I'm not sure. I don't remember that.
Yeah, yeah, so, as the development continues, they could pull out money on an incremental basis. It's not as enticing a deal for the developer, but they were already kind of entrenched in the project and wanted to see it through. So, that was a way to help give something to them to kind of encourage the development, but it's not as big as some other offers, but they were, they're ready to go forward with it, so...
Half the loaf's better than no loaf. Now, how many houses do you expect to?
They're hoping at least 100. Obviously, market conditions can change, and, you know, if things could happen, they can prevent that, but the reason why the five-year incentive window remains in place, so that's kind of, I think that will drive a lot of the growth. But, again, if we were to have a run-up on material prices, things can, outside influences can change.
If they go belly up, the window's still up for five years to damn, but if somebody else were to come in behind them, God forbid this happens, they would have to come before council to...
The CRA is open to any, CRA is open to any development in town, and it's not even just new construction, it could be infrastructure. So, yeah, until the house has a certificate of occupancy, it's not, that's kind of when the process starts, so... It would be essentially for the developer or the builder, it's a sales tactic. You can't buy this house, you wanna have pay tax, property tax, or a reduced property tax, so... So, the answer to the question is?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so... Let's go ahead and move for, I'm looking, move for third reading of ordinance 2209, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perkey, second by Leirman.
The other special critic.
It's been, that's the thing about this, we've been talking about this for overall a year now, and, you know, I'm glad to see that it's finally come to fruition, and we're gonna see some development, so...
So, it's third read, ordinance 2209, and we have a roll call.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
abstain.
We have one extension, Osborne, all the balance are in favor. So, motion carries. May we have third read, please?
In ordinance declaring the improvement of a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, creating an incentive District TIF, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit, or that once made will directly benefit, the parcel from which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and move taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, which is 5709.40C, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.2328, 5709.25, declaring it per se.
Thank you, Brian. That's the last, I mean, I'm afraid so.
There's bond ones?
Yep. So, I'll move for a passage of ordinance 2209 as red.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, ordinance 2209, roll call, please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Motion carries with one extension, ordinance 2209 passes.
All right.
Who's, who is my second? Thank you.
The other special critic.
All right, moving on to the last item on our agenda tonight, it's ordinance 2211. We had some pretty hearty discussion about this at our last meeting. So, as not to belabor some of that, I'll kind of introduce, 2211, it's an ordinance that deals with council compensation. We found, and in the legislation, there's some backstory in the whereas, if we need to go through that, but... It's an attempt to bring council up to the minimum requirement for state curves, so... John, I know you sent a letter out to council, do you wanna add anything into that, or do you wanna discuss it at all?
No, I pretty much said a little under the...
Okay. Yes?
The item that you refer to, which was slashed across the news, Cheryl, concerns bringing wages up to the O P E R S minimum. I have some questions here, and I hope not to try the patience of council in general, and the precedent of council in particular.
Thank you.
How many hours a week do any of you put in on a job? And before you answer, that's attending meetings up here, contacts with the public, on or off the phone, perhaps delivering paperwork back and forth, or following the sunshine law, any communications between you concerning council business? Did I say in a week? Okay, let's make it easy, in a month, since I believe these salaries before taxes are paid monthly, or are they paid twice a month?
Monthly.
Monthly. So, there is my first question. How many hours? Anybody?
So, I'll start, and I'll turn it open to anybody that wants to answer, too. But I tend not to think of any of the projects as an hourly project. And it changes month to month, so in the summer, when we're cruising along with all our projects, there's not as much involvement for city council, at least for me. When we get handed a city budget in the fall, and it's time to start pulling through that, that amps up a lot more time. You know, I would say properly vetting through a budget's a solid 20-hour to 30-hour project, if you're really going through and comparing. Now, that happens over the course of three meetings, so over a month and a half. It's hard for me to put a figure on it hourly, 'cause I don't track them, and I don't really think, I think if the job is a 24/7 kind of job, somebody calls me, I'll answer the phone. I don't ever run a meter on it, so... Not to give you a non-answer, but it's not anything that I've ever considered as an hourly-type position.
Rough idea in a year? 200 hours a year? 300 hours a year? 400 hours?
I don't know. What do you, what do you, gentlemen, anybody have any ideas about it? I'll do some math and try to guess, but again, it's, oh, go ahead.
I'll calculate, too. I was, probably... Probably around 400 hours a year.
400 hours a year? Four-hundred hours a year?
And, 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 follow me, follow my math through that, 'cause I went through that real quick, I had a hard time.
That's all right.
I'll check, okay.
I spent a year and a half in the first grade, so it'll be okay, I understand.
Um, any, on a busy week, probably sixteen, on a less busy week, probably eight, uh, eight, uh, four, eight, thirty-two times twelve is what?
Thirty-two times twelve would be three-hundred-twenty and sixty-four would be three-hundred-and-eighty-four hours.
Well, roughly four-hundred hours, give or take.
Twenty, about thirty.
Would, would, would the rest of you, gentlemen, be in agreement, based on your experience at this position, that that is a, an average number, a high number, a low number? Does anybody else wanna kick in numbers here? I'm going somewhere with all this, and again, Mr. President, I beg your, for your patience and indulgence.
Appreciate it. Um, I, anybody else have anything they'd like to contribute or?
I think that's fair, slightly more, yeah.
I, I, I would say it would be slightly more for me. I, I attend a lot of things as a city councilman, um, so, six to seven, maybe, I, I, I don't know, but that, that would be on the high end.
So, let's just say then, three-hundred-and-eighty-two hours, three-hundred-and-eighty hours? Three-hundred-and-seventy-five hours, there's a nice round number. Okay. Now, why is there such an urgency, or I should rephrase that, why is there a goal of bringing the wages up to the O P E R S minimum? Instead of asking the O P E R S why they keep raising it and why they haven't offered exemptions for people in a position that you're in now? Because if I remember right, even back when I had hair, there was O P E R, Oprah's eligibility way back when. And I'm given to understand that over the years, they have increased the minimum amount. And it seems to me that you're chasing a minimum amount, and well, I think everybody should get all the money they can, whether they're playing major league football, running a city, or running a country. At the end of the day, the taxpayers would probably like to have this better explained. And, let's see, there's an old political saying I learned years ago. If the numbers don't favor your position, push the percentage. If the percentage doesn't favor your position, push those numbers. And I think everybody in this room has seen a hearty generous use of those philosophies over the last two and a half years. So, at this point, the increase that you're seeking appears to me, in percentage, to be a real eye-gathering number, eye-grabbing number, yet, the number that you're asking for, based on what you're making now, doesn't appear to be such a huge deal, such as I've heard, and no offense to anyone in the room, because I've heard this from more than one person who may be in a position to know, the city is slightly flushed with cash right now. Actually, it was a stronger term use, but I, for the sake of the court, I'm not going to repeat it verbatim. Anyway...
Let's wrap it up, Mark.
My thought is, and my question is, is this an all or nothing? In other words, if you don't get it, what are you gonna do? And if it's vetoed, what are you gonna do? And is there anywhere between what you're making now and what you seek, merely because a government retirement agency says, "This is what you gotta make so you get into our party"? Is there a number anywhere in between? I don't know, five, ten, fifteen, well, maybe twenty percent, but something in there, and then step this out. I'm not belittling the efforts that you put in. But, as you well know, if this job was paying so well, you all have a lot more competition. So, at the end of the day, I have to ask these questions, and they don't have to be answered tonight, but I would respectfully ask that before you continue with the next reading, you, however you do it, table this and go back and examine for other options up to and including, seeing if you can get ten or fifteen percent, and seeing if someone could get Oprah's attention and find out why they have to keep raising the rates.
Lot of questions that can't be answered, but thank you. Well, so...
Then, I would ask this, you tabled.
Thank you. I'll, uh, just see if I have anything they wanna add or...
Point of order, okay?
Sure.
I think we all need to be, not necessarily in agreement, but, uh, in the same page. We all work together in this. Let me ask the question of John. John, we have a human resources director, okay? Do you think it would be worthwhile to gather this information and submit it to Mr. Vinicius and have him make a recommendation back on what is fair? The reason I'm saying this, let, let's face it, if we're doing it because of just O P E R S, okay, that's one thing. What is justifiable? What is fair? What is equitable for the amount of time we're in? Like, I share with some of you, 'cause of course I've got a lot of gray hair, don't have much hair left. I remember making twenty-four-hundred dollars a year, I remember making three-thousand or thirty-six-hundred, and then, of course, all the brakes was put on about cutting it back. You know, what is a fair amount of compensation? John, how do you feel about that?
Well, that's why I share with you what I, you know, we looked at the surrounding rule, command this bill, you got that email, didn't you?
Exactly. I mean, it makes you think, you know, okay, and, and from the responsibility of taxpayers, I don't think any of us up here take this job to benefit personally, you know? You're never gonna gain publicly, uh, you know, from a private standpoint, you know, what, what can I use my council position for? If you're into that, it's the wrong doggone reason. I think we're all doing it to try and give back to the city. Nick and I have talked about this many other times, that man made a comment to me when I first got in council, and it's resonated with me for decades. Billy, always remember, you're spending taxpayers' money, spend it like it's your own. Nick, it was great advice, I've used it all my years in council and also with school, you know? So, I think we need to look from a professional standpoint, if we could have some input from your human resources director, John. Let, let's try and work together on this and come up with a fair and equitable method of what should be the council salary compensation. That's my two cents worth, that's all I feel.
Yeah, Nick, go ahead, go ahead.
I wanted to know at the last council meeting, and I'll tell you why, I think everybody deserves to know. I'm not against increasing council salaries, I think it needs to be done. At the last council meeting though, I didn't have enough information to know whether that was the right amount or the wrong amount, what P E R S really was, I mean, you know, how important it really was, I, I just had a lot of doubts, so I wanted to know. Since that time, there's been a lot of work done, looking at comparables, looking at, what other cities are doing, which really doesn't have too much relevance to what we're doing, but in, in some respects, you don't wanna, you know, it gives you an, an area in which maybe you could be. And looking at the numbers that came in, and I've seen several sets of numbers, I think it's probably justifiable to go for the P E R S amount. Whether you wanna do that or not, personally, P E R S really doesn't have that much traction with me. Uh, that would not make any decision for me personally whatsoever, whether I wanted to run for the job or not. And let me tell you something else, and this has gotta be said over and over and over again. There's a good chance not one of us sitting at this table, including the mayor, would even, in a, if, if we passed his salary, would never see it. Even if it passed tonight, we'd probably never see it, because twenty-one months from now, that's when the rate increase would come into effect, twenty-one months from now. And there'll be somebody else up to buy this chair, I guarantee that, if I'm a gun, for this... So, now, so now, so now, having said that, um, I think it's incumbent upon us to bring, bring people along that are capable of administering a thirty-million-dollar, and incidentally, Mayor, I appreciate what you said about wanting to, to watch the, the dollars. But ultimately, those dollars are council's responsibilities, not really the administration. You're, you're charged with spending wisely what council appropriate. So, you look at a thirty-million-dollar budget, ten-million-dollar operating budget, Mary Kay or thereabouts, but thirty-million dollars total, goes into the city every year this time, probably, something like that. That's a hell of a responsibility. And you talk about the hours that we spend, not a lot of people know it, unless they read social media, but I mean, hell, all of us were named as individuals in a lawsuit for a wrongful death that didn't even include the, the city of Wilmington. But it caused some of us, if we were so inclined, to go out and consult and pay for an attorney to find out, you know, what our responsibilities actually were. Those things come up all the time. And so, the budget responsibility, yes, but it's probably a forty-thousand-dollar question to be spent, uh, twenty-one months from now. I think the city can probably figure out a way to find forty-seven thousand dollars in the next twenty-one months, I don't think the budgets are, are, are the issue. We are, we just passed an ordinance that gave a two percent increase cost of living to the non-bargaining unit employees. We just passed that tonight. Why did we do it? Because we felt it was important to reward employees, to keep them good employees, to show that they're respected, to keep them up with, with, with the cost of living, and, so, you know, the, the, why is it any different for council people? If you're looking at people down the road, if you wanna attract people down the road, you wanna attract good people, so you wanna put some money out there to do. Not that anybody's gonna do it for the money, as Bill said, if somebody's gonna do it for the money, I don't want them up here anyway. But they ought to be recognized, and recognized in the same category, price-wise, as what these other cities are doing. There's a lot of other cities out there that have gotten Washington Courthouse tied theirs to P E R S. There's a lot of other cities our size doing the same thing, so I mean, it's justifiable and it's affordable. Now, as, uh, Mayor mentioned in his letter, and rightfully so, that there's a lot of inflation gonna take place in the next few years, but if you take, if you take that eight percent number of inflation, okay, and you, you look at, um, what's that eight percent gonna do over the next few, that, that, the, the dollars that we're gonna give a future council won't have the spending power right, and we passed this tonight, they won't have the spending power that the money is that we're getting right now, if you take that eight percent number, if you do the math. And so, it's not an unreasonable amount, and I think it's justifiable. I think we're, and I, I hate to keep rating myself, but I'm going to, we're doing, it's a good chance not a lot of us are gonna see it, it's gonna be for somebody else. And so, if you take into consideration the responsibilities of the job, the major budget, the hours that are expended, which incidentally, right now, it comes out about ten dollars an hour, if you take my figures.
Nine-eighty-eight before taxes, assuming a three-hundred-and-nine-dollar-a-month salary, that's what I was trying to show you. And since the first of the year, inflation has paced at about seven-point-nine percent.
Sir, I, I don't appreciate you're speaking without being recognized.
I apologize, he addressed me, I responded.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. And so, while I couldn't vote yes at the last meeting, 'cause I didn't have enough information, now I believe I do. Now, as I said, the P E R S thing doesn't mean that much to me, so is there, is there a number that might be slightly less than the P E R S or slightly more than the P E R S? I don't know. But let's, let's get a little bit more information, let's talk about that. You know, with six-thousand-five-hundred dollars due, and how much of an incentive is P E R S, do you guys think would, would be for another council member coming on? I'd like to hear your opinion about it, just one man talking.
I can, I can speak to that a little bit, and I can maybe answer some of Mike's questions about how we landed here. The, this conversation kinda came up between Mary Kay and I a while back, because the, the original ordinance from two thousand and five that set council salary at Per's minimum was the one that was repealed, and was it two thousand and nine, post-D H L, when they, when they took the pay cut, and, which, which was a good move, I, I think, but that was the intention, you know, the intention of that law was to set council salary at Per's minimum, obviously, Per's does its thing and it always ultimately goes out. But, when we had our last, we, we discussed this, we had a, in session to kinda talk about the legality, how it worked, you know, what would it look like, uh, get council feedback, we had a committee meeting about it, we ended up, right, giving some advice that, you know, in our last term, we had to wait until this term, because you really, you're not talking about us, you're talking about the people sitting in these seats after the next election. So, we had to make sure we were kinda doing the due diligence for that, but, one thing that really struck me is that all seven of us, eight of us, ran opposed, and, in, in, not, not that we're super politically party motivated or oriented, but, and in discussing with some, some people of my party, I knew that there were two Democrats running and five Republicans running for the council seats. They say, "If you know anybody that might be interested", you know, there would, I'm sure the Democrats left some opposition against Republicans and vice versa, so they were kinda, uh, looking for some people that might be interested, and what kept coming back to me is I would, I talked to a few people and I would be like, "I don't know, there's just a lot of time for, for, it doesn't really seem worth it." And one of the things I talked to Mary Kay about was, you know, is it possible to add benefits on, you know, could there be like health insurance benefit? Well, they can't afford that, it's a twenty grand a year plus, I think that's what we budget an employee at, twenty plus grand a year.
Round number.
Twenty thousandish a year per, so, uh, we talked about that, Per's enticement, well, what if there were, you know, somebody who was in the, some sort of Ohio, you know, municipal, state, county government that might be at a point where it's like, "Hey, I'd like a few more years of Per's, maybe you get somebody who's, who's, uh, interested in running for those reasons." So, that's why it kinda landed at that number, um, was to make that an enticement or a potential benefit. We, we always talk about in the, our transit service benefits very well from people who are kinda toward the end of their career and wanna knock off a few more years of Per's, of Per's eligibility, so they drive part-time at, at the transit department, which is great. But, those people, maybe possibly, they could run for city council, that was kinda the, the idea of where, where that number came from. And the number's a moving target, I mean, full disclosure, uh, this is a, the numbers that were included in the legislation are a Per's estimate, until twenty-twenty-four, they won't have their final dollar amount, but they, you know, estimate that that's what it'll be. So, it's kinda where we, how we landed, where we, where we're at. For me, and I, I had a discussion with the mayor on Tuesday, I don't believe in creating these long-term, this is, our council terms are two years. Any adjustments you wanted to make should happen within a two-year period. I don't think it should be something that rolls term to term to term to term. In doing research, I was looking at Amherst, uh, Ohio, and they just, they voted this in back in October, right before the November election, and they've been doing every two years, trying to do another adjustment, and it just, it, it seems, uh, kinda foolish to me, uh, you either figure out where you wanna go and get there, uh, or don't. Like Nick said, to that end, we're talking about thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's a substantial sum of money, I'm not saying it's not, but, in the grand scheme of things, I don't, anytime you wanna spread something out over many years, it feels to me like you're trying to minimize the tax impact, you know, taxpayer impact, it's not millions of dollars. Right, so that was, uh, I would, I'm fine discussing doing it over a two-year window, uh, again, Per's might not be the right target, that's the, uh, the one we kinda started talking about with Mary Kay, and I had the discussion about, you know, could, what does it look like at City of Florida, what's it, uh, Per's is where we landed on it, so, I'm open for discussion beyond that, but I just wanted to kinda give some information as to why we got where we're, where we're at, so.
Councilman Perky, I think that was a, a good rendition there. I've got a couple of things I'd like to say. The Councilman Leirman's points of, uh, coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is a success. Edward Everett Hale said that in about eighteen-sixty-eight. And, we have done that. We have come together and we have done some amazing things as Councilman, or, as, Shadaker just pointed out to us, Service Director Shadaker, we're doing some amazing things on this city council. I've been coming to city council a long time, way before I was elected, and that was, uh, because I enjoy hearing what's going on in my community. I don't, Mark, how long have you served on city council, do you think? Twenty years? Twenty years? That's probably about as long as I've been coming here. I used to walk up here, what, before I could drive, just to see what's going on in my community. This is the only thing that I've truly, 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 truly ever wanted to do, is be an elected official, so I could serve my community in a capacity and really make a difference. I don't do this for the, for the money, I don't do this for any other reason, except to help my community. When this all came about last week, or a couple of weeks ago, I started doing... When this all came about last week, or a couple of weeks ago, I started doing a lot of research, a ton of research, and you all got the spreadsheet. Amherst, Besiris, Dover, Lublin, Norton Salem, Zena, Lebanon, Washington Courthouse, Hillsborough, Georgetown, and Richmond Heights. Those are the cities that I researched. I called each individual city, and I asked them what their mayor made and what their council pay was. And I did this based off population from the Ohio Municipal League, from their salary survey of two thousand and nineteen. And then I took that population, and I, and I put it against ours for two thousand and twenty. Roughly about the same, some dropped, some gained, but roughly about the same. Every single city, every single city said, that's it, that's all you get paid. And then I went into the D H L deal, and I talked about how that was a smart decision at the time. I said, I will always back that decision, because it needed to happen. We are now moving forward. Our city has a slogan that was adopted by Mayor Evelyn that says, a worthy heritage and a winning future. There is no question that the heritage did the right thing. We are now doing this for the future, because none of us, except the treasurer, as Councilman Evelyn pointed out, may be the beneficiaries of this. I'm okay with that. But we are incentivizing the future, just like what we just did with the two percent pay raise, with the T I F agreement that we just agreed to, and everything else that we saw tonight, that Service Director Shattaker put up on that board. That's our future. I think that this is, I voted yes, because I think this is the right thing to do, even though I may not be a beneficiary of it. I may not sit in this chair, but I believe in it. Because the numbers that I got, that are on your spreadsheet, that is now a public document from record, anybody can request it, supports this. The city of Amherst went through this, as Councilman Perkey pointed out. Besiris, Dover, they're all significantly higher than us, because we did the right thing at the right time. And this is again, the right thing at the right time. An idea, like a ghost, must be spoken to a little before, and then it will explain itself. Charles Dickens said that. This idea has been a ghost for a long time, and now we are speaking of it. I believe that we're speaking of it in the right context, we're asking the right questions. And I haven't done this much talking on city council, I think, yet. But again, I believe in the idea strongly. But we have to talk about it. We just can't sit here twiddle our thumbs if we're not doing that. And that's what I have not been doing. And I have worked probably ten hours, you're asking about hours, I probably worked ten hours on that spreadsheet, talking to folks. When this hit the paper several weeks, or a couple of weeks ago, people came up to me and said, that's all you made? That's it? And I said, yeah, that's it. We are responsible for debt, we are responsible for a budget that is a pretty sizable number. If anything goes wrong, it's us. Anything, but Mary Kay won't let that happen. I had people tell me, you need this. There isn't one single person, except for a letter to the editor, that said, as a private citizen, you don't deserve this. Now, I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked to secretaries, I've talked to wages, I've talked to bankers. I've talked to everyday, ordinary retirees, that all they want to do is have their toilets flushed, their garbage picked up, and their water running. And that's all they said, was you deserve this. And I said, I don't deserve this. The future deserves this. And they paused, and they said, you're really not doing this for yourself. I said, I can't do it for myself, because I cannot get myself a raise, but I can get the future a raise. And so that's why I believe so strongly in this, because we're doing it for the future. And everybody up here knows that I'm an historian, and I can pick anything out of any street and talk about it. But that's how I feel, and I'm going to shut up now.
All right. Does anybody else have anything to like to add? Nobody wants to follow that, Jonathan?
Yeah. Someone else?
I've got a story in question.
Sure.
When was the last time that all ward races, the at-large, and council president were all contested?
Well, I don't know if that's ever happened. The largest contested race was probably in nineteen ninety-nine. We had a four, we had a third ward race, we had a first ward race, a second race, a mayor race. Nick, you may need to help me out on this one.
I remember that.
And a second.
I remember that.
I know, you were a victim of ninety-nine, but, but, but I believe the only uncontested ward was Hockaday. Jamie Flager had somebody, Robert Resk, and Conny Harding, I believe, had somebody.
Second ward.
Second ward, she was second. But that was pretty good.
Hey, call me Rick Van Winkle, I remember a third ward council race in the old city building, yours truly versus Jim Brady. Jim Brady said we didn't need to do city hall. I backed the city hall, but God rest his soul, you know, I did prevail fifty-nine to forty-one percent. So that would have been nineteen ninety-one, third ward race.
This is all good discussion. Maybe we grab.
My only ordinance was, it sounds like it's not happened very much in the course of history of the city. Perhaps if this were to pass, I will concur with my colleagues, that perhaps that would elicit these types of competition.
Before that be excised.
Yeah.
Risk for the milk.
That's a lot. Was there synergy, anything you wanted to?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is certainly a tough one, and I'm not sure I disagree with anything that's been said so far. I agree with Nick that the old purse is not really a draw for me, and I'm not sure, I mean, it makes some sense, because we were there in two thousand and five, looking at the numbers that have been provided, the mean looks like it's somewhere around six And so that's even less than if we tack it on the old purse. But I don't know, there's something about, about it that makes me a little queasy about giving that big of a jump, but I definitely think there needs to be a significant jump, because of what you said originally, Matt, just some incentive there.
In one of our past meetings, a former council member said, you know, it was, and I'm paraphrasing, something to the effect of, nobody does city council for the money, it's just not enough money. Even if we were to hit this P E R S minimum, you get to the seven hundred, I'm sorry, I don't have it here, seven hundred and twenty dollars a month, or whatever it was, it would, it's still not going to pay a mortgage, right? It's still, it's not going to be an amount of money that's going to cause anybody to quit a job, and, right, it's just not. P E R S is a, is a moving target, you know, and I think that's one of the, the really forward-thinking things that council did in twenty, two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, when they decided to put a pause to it, because they, they know that that continues on, and I would assume that it would be something that would be addressed down the road as well. But I do still think that it could have some enticement to people. I, like yourselves, don't have, I probably will not have any sort of P E R S retirement. I, you know, I, I don't even, like most of us have said, I don't know, we'll be sitting in this seat next year, so, or the year after, so. It may, it's not, I don't think this is something that anybody's doing for personal gain up here, trying to make a judicious or, you know, wise decision for the future. I think that's a good target to land on. I, you know, I'm kind of, in my thoughts, I've seen some, some really talented workers who have kind of retired out of the cab, the cab driving department, I'm like, I'd love to get somebody like that, that has all that knowledge and experience involved in local government. In talking to some township trustees, I believe we're the only elected officials in Clem County of a city that are, I don't know about Blanchesters, I can't say, but I believe everybody else qualifies for P E R S. So that's why it's a, you know, so I get some of the township trustees, I'm like, yeah, we get heard, you know, it's, so that's why it felt like, it's not a dart thrown at a board, right? It was, it was a benefit that's common amongst other elected officials in the county. And like I said, I can't speak for, you know, Village of Martinsville, or Village, you know, Blanchester, but I, I can speak for the, the township level and county for sure. So that's where we, why we're landing where we're at. I mean, we can discuss if we want to talk about, I, I struggle with this, because there's a part of me that says, if we're trying to make it a benefit for somebody to, you know, that may want to run in the future, then you need to go all the way on it. If not, don't go at all, you know, because it's not going to change the fact that it's still not a lot of money, you know, it's just not. And so I kind of go back and forth between that in my head versus, you know, inflation is happening, maybe it is the right thing to come and kind of land in somewhere in the middle. Maybe it could be a every-two-year strategy to try to get somewhere, and eventually it lands at P E R S. That's not just my decision to make. So I'm happy to entertain that discussion, or discuss, you know, discuss that if that's something we want to talk about. We can move forward with this and kind of, what Bill said, kind of send it off to H R and see what they think. There will be some work done, you know, if you want to, if you want to push that through, as far as it's going to have to happen kind of quickly. Or, as I said, you can table it and hold on to it. It's my intention to, if yes or no, up or down, push this forward sooner rather than later, because I don't want to get to a point where people start petitioning again. We get into that legality, yeah, we get into that area of what Brett said, you know, last year with, it just kind of turns into ethical gray area, I want you to know who's, who's kind of thinking about it, who's not, so. Have, have you have any thoughts about that?
Well, petitioning doesn't occur until December.
Till the end of the year.
I appreciate all of the things that I've heard, because it's been quite the learning curve. Can I still pull the little new guy?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because there is a lot of history here that I've picked up on, you know, asking questions over the last two weeks, that I did not understand or know. How did we end up there? And why was there, why was no decision made to increase salary for council since twenty thirteen, you know, nine years ago? There's been no change for nine years. So why, you know, now I understand, or at least I think I know. You know, is, is P E R S the, you know, is P E R S the point to hit? Probably. Is it the one to hit in two years? I'm okay to send it back to committee and discuss it some more, because we've got to decide.
We've got time, we've got time.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I would make a motion, we table it tonight. I would feel more comfortable moving forward if we could have some data gathered and give an opinion from the Human Resource Department, they're professionals, they're the experts. Let's gather some additional information before we move forward. Let's try to have a united, unified front, strike the word united, try to have a unified front, and all work together for the future, taking into account like what Jonathan said too. Because I'm telling you folks, this is it, this is my last ride, I will not be filing again. So there will be a new third ward council, and there could be some other new phases, but with all due respect, I would make a motion, we table this tonight.
Bill, could we change the terminology and postpone? I think table's incorrect.
Okay. I would make a motion, we respectfully postpone this till the next council.
Give me a second.
Second.
A motion by Learman, second by Albright.
I, I have a question.
Let, let me finish, and I'll let you. And now we can have a discussion.
All right. I, I want to be clear on what Mr. Learman would, would like. I, I want to make exactly, I want to make crystal clear exactly what we're, what we're asking here in this motion.
He's just asking for a motion to postpone.
But he wants information gathered, and I just want to make sure we know what that information is.
So, okay, so let me address that. What I, what I've heard, and if I'm wrong, you can correct me, is that we, we should take this back down to committee. I agree with Bill in that, if you give me the, it was important that you guys all got the Ohio Municipal League spreadsheet, because it has everybody.
It was very.
And I can gerrymander that in favor or against this, either way you want to go. You know, if you want me to find a bunch of small cities who ever pay their people, I can do that. If you want me to find a bunch of really large cities that don't pay their people anything, that, right, it, it's, it is literally all over the map. So when you try to find comparable things, you need to refer out to experts, like Human Resource Departments, the ones who have, they can see the trends. I mean, I think, is it, the one I saw there, I was thinking of Mike, because he's from, Michael, because he's from Eden, was a hundred dollars. I mean, it was like the lowest salary I'd ever seen, and I was like, what's going on there? But you have some that, you know, obviously the major hubs pay hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? So the, the numbers in that spreadsheet are all over the map, but it's, I think it's, if you want to find a human resource, you know, use human resources to kind of cut through all that, because it becomes important for us to, to try to do what we think is best going forward. So like I said, I know Bill says he's not going to be here, I don't know if, I don't know if any of us will, but, so, we've got to postpone the time, good with that, we can take it back next month and have a committee meeting on it, bring, once we have some, some idea, I think that gives us a month, really, and we can bring discussion back here. As you know, I like committee meetings for doing work, but when it comes time to discuss, I like to bring everything here, so. It's hard, it's problematic to, to have a lot of discussion that moves things forward in committee for me, because more of you can't participate. So I think that's a, a good plan, that I encapsulate what everybody.
True. And by that way, we follow the rules of such I want to. I don't like going behind closed doors, talking about something like that, that we can't discuss openly with everybody.
Correct.
I, I'd like to do it this way.
So I think if I can relate this to, to our, we'll, we'll postpone this tonight.
Let's have a vote.
And.
We need to have a vote.
We do need to have a vote.
We have, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second to postpone this reading until the next meeting. All favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right.
No, go ahead. Okay, so, we will look for a judiciary committee meeting, we'll schedule for the, a month from now, for the third week, I guess, is our regular scheduling, so we can pick it back up then. In the meantime, I'll get with, you give me the.
We'll postpone it until the next meeting.
They'll set the next meeting.
Oh, well, if we don't advance the legislation, we don't have to advance the legislation, there's no law, so we have to. I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily want to have a special judiciary meeting, I want to, if we're going to utilize human resources, I want to have time for that work to get done, and then I want to have.
We're, we're having Robert's role.
Well, move it through the agenda, I mean, it would get moved to the next regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
Which would be Robert's role on April seventh.
Which would be April seventh.
But for me, it's a meet till the.
But the committee to discuss it does not need until the third, Thursday.
I say I can move, I can pull it up.
Could you amend his motion to the next meeting?
I don't need to.
No, not your, the.
We don't, we don't need to. We postpone the piece of legislation for tonight, if we have to pull it pending future, I don't think that would, I mean, we could correct me if I'm wrong.
We postponed it, we had, or we may not need to.
Okay.
Probably more like guidelines.
And is there a list of items that we want to connect to?
Yes, I will work with you by Monday to, to start working on that.
HR is not able to pull this off in two weeks.
I don't expect them to.
Because I can't.
I don't expect them to. So I think that's why we're talking about, you know, our next regularly scheduled judiciary meeting is a month from now, but I hope we have the beginnings of something to discuss at that point.
Well, I can't even promise that, because, you know, Greg already has other things on his plate. I think it's a great idea, but we want a good report, we don't want something to be brushed through.
Why don't we reach out, and once we have a list of the things that we want to work on, we'll reach out to him and see what the timeline would look like, and then we'll let him.
I'm not going to give him the timeline now.
And I will go ahead and place it on the agenda at the next meeting, at which time, if a future, if another decision has been made.
We can decide what we can do at that point.
Exactly. Perfect.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
Well, my voice is still, I still have some voice left, so I think I want to keep going. Okay, I have nothing further, thanks, sir.
Michael, I sent you down, did you have any, any other comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now's the time. And pertinent to this, correct?
It's pertinent to this, very simple. I came here to ask questions and to unfortunately question how you arrived at this point, what your due diligence was. The number I suggested is just a. is just a number. It could be anything depending on what you find out in the weeks and months ahead. With that being said, I have a question. $309 a month is what you guys get and your predecessors before taxes? Is that the right number right now?
315.
315. Okay, well, in that case, assuming the 25% deduction and 375 hours a year, you might be taking home $7.45. Now, when the pay cut was issued, that November, gasoline went to a dollar and a quarter a gallon. I don't think we'll see it again. I understand your positions. Mr. Mayor, I understand your position completely. I would ask that this comes together and it doesn't become a public spectacle and it doesn't become an absolute catastrophe. We've got enough of those to deal with in the world right now. We don't need another one here. I'm not saying you don't deserve the money. I merely questioned how you got here and offered a compromise, but even that could be out of line. So that's where I leave it. I'm done.
Michael, one thing I'll add real quick, and you mentioned this, I'll check, but I don't think the Pers minimum is changeable. You, it's a, it's a minimum of the state. I'll double check with them, but you mentioned that a couple of times and I never have noticed, so I wouldn't want to. They, they don't, they don't give you any wiggle room, so. But like I said, I'll follow up just to do the due diligence, so.
Do you have something else?
I agree.
Okay, I thought you had a comment. Alright, was that all, sir?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perkey, for a very thorough report tonight. Appreciate everybody's indulgence. Public Works, Mr. Snar.
No legislation, but I just want to give a quick update on something many of you may have heard about. Yesterday, there was a small plane emergency, emergency landing at Caesar's Creek Lake. It happened about a mile upstream from our intake. There was no evidence of oil leakage or fuel leakage, but the water plant decided to switch to the reservoir water just to be safe, which I think was a great idea. The plane was removed from water. There was no sign of anything we doubt. And so we're all good.
Thank you. We're all good there.
We're all good there.
There. And nobody was hurt, would you?
Right, somehow. It flipped.
Yeah, they flipped that thing over.
It was crashed.
Alright, is that all you had, Mr. Snar?
If you mean that all, that was pretty good.
Yes, that is all I had. I'll give you credit on that one.
In respect of the guy.
Right.
Alright.
I give a point for that.
Under reports to council, you're, you have the honorary treasurer's report before you, which adds some additional explanation in finance. Get any comments or do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Apologies, that your copy says January. It is the February report. It's, I do the numbers. I'm not always paying attention to what the heading says. So my apologies for that, but it is the February report. So you can take your pen and make it February, please.
Alright, dude. We would be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion by Perkey, second by McKay to accept the honorary treasurer's report as presented. All in favor, six p.m. to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Report is accepted as presented. We now open the meeting to the public. If anyone wishes to address council, please come forward and state your name and address and keep your comments to amend.
Mr. Fred, I do have one thing to say. We had a water line break over on the corner of High and Vine Street and the city monitored it for a couple, three days to make sure, you know, it really was a water leak or if it was just groundwater coming out. And it was found to be leaking and Nick's, Nick Seling, Josh Snell, and Mark Rovar worked on that. It was Monday or Tuesday, all day, because they couldn't find the main shut-off to it and it was highly pressurized. So it, what was about a 20-minute to 30-minute job turned into an all-day affair. But they worked extremely hard to, to get it fixed and they were out there from just about 9:00 until about 7:00 P.M. So they, they worked overtime and I want to thank those guys because they, they really deserved it.
Anyone else? I'm gonna ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned and happy Saint Patrick's Day, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good times.
Well, you did make a statement several years back when there was going to be a test race.
Someone strongly urged me to go take out a collision cap for this license, literally.
So he came.
We were before the deadline.
My estimate was not.
Defiant, fact, I even had a fifty dollars, went over, got the whole package. Come hell and I wondered, ask what this telephone looks like, long by the city, and I said, "I decided to run a president in the council."
It's a mystery world.
So after I explained it, really, my reason, she goes, "This is after a ten-hour day of work." She says, "What's the job pay?" I said, "Why?"
You want to watch?
President of council.
It's gonna be.
I said, "What Mr. Vayner's been doing for years, in Congress, only hitting the seven cats." And she said, "Forget it. You're not doing it. Take the biter."
Have a good night. We'll see you soon. I was talking to your daughter the other day. I was like, "Hey, you guys have good news to tell me?" Somebody said, "I'm like, Daniel, you got good news?" And I give, I give grief every time, so.